So, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Espada, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the January 21st, 2025 Planning Board Meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with state, current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast at the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom and by the Needham Channel and is being recorded for publication, later viewing, and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website of needhamma.gov. So I'll call the roll for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert?
President.
Artie Crocker?
President.
Adam Block?
President.
Justin McCollum?
President.
And our staff, Lee Newman and Alex Clay, are here. So our agenda tonight, we have one public hearing tonight. It's a request for revisions to site and building at major project site plan special permit number 1997-08 for 63 Kendrick Street. We have a transfer permit for major project site plan permit number 2008-01 for frozen custard, New England Abbots, to frozen custard, Boston. We have a discussion and vote to submit to the Select Board the set of zoning amendments known as the base compliance plan to initiate the process of amending the zoning bylaws in accordance to MGL C40A. We have a discussion and vote to submit an action plan for interim compliance to EOHLC. We have a discussion of the draft state regulations on ADUs, which Chris Heap will be here for. Discussion and vote to appoint Bill Paulson to the Large House Review Committee. We have a Board of Appeals, a General Bylaw Review Committee appointment, meeting minutes, and then report from Planning Board and Board members and correspondence. So, so the first item is a public hearing request for revisions to site and building at major project site plan special permit number 1997-08, 63 Kendrick Street. So is there a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice?
No.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Artie, seconded by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, hi George. It'd be good for you to introduce your team. I just want to, in general, just say we received some correspondence a second ago, so I just wanted to review all the correspondence to date with the board. So, police and fire had no comment. Board of Health has some items, which include pest control, lighting, any retail food establishment that needs to have application and permits for that. If there are plans to design open biosafety laboratory, that also needs to have some type of a planning process through that. And then we just received two items. One from the, from the Building Commissioner, Joe Prondak, that says that he has reviewed the applicant's proposal and requests for related special permits to make certain alterations to the building and parking areas at 63 Kendrick Street. He agrees with Attorney Junta's analysis and determination of required special permits as complete and correct, and the office has no additional comments or concerns for the proposal. We also have one, another one, and I'm trying to look for it, is it this one, the Engineering Division? Is that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, from Thomas Ryder, the Town Engineer, that says that the Department of Public Works has completed its review of the project. And, and so the comments is that they suggest that the applicant review pending EPA stormwater permit. We have been in discussions with the applicant's representatives and they have agreed to prepare an operation and maintenance plan for the stormwater management and to provide existing and future inspection reports. And then, as part of the NPDES requirement, the applicant has submitted a letter proposing public outreach and education and public participation and involvement control measures to be incorporated into the decision. So with that, if you want to introduce everyone.
Sure thing. Okay, thank you very much. My name is George Jenta Jr. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. And starting to my right, we have the ownership slash development team. Right next to me is Mitch Kessler. He's the principal behind Edgewater Development, which is effectively the owner of the property. And with him is Casey Hickson, who's also with Edgewater. To their right is Daniel Malloy. He's the project engineer. And then to my left, I have Bill Madden, who's the landscape architect, and David Silverman, who is the architect for the project. All right. So, this is a, in essence, an amendment to an existing major project site plan special permit, but it's a little bit more involved than just sort of a minor amendment. Still, at the end of it, it's really not a huge change. It's just, there's a lot of moving parts to get there. So this is for the property of 63 Kendrick Street, which is located at the corner of Kendrick and Fourth Avenue. It's a site that is shown as parcel six on Assessors Map 300. It's in the New England Business Center zoning district. The lot contains 201,361 square feet of area. It's a large parcel. It's got 372.99 feet of frontage on Kendrick, as well as 739.89 feet of frontage on Fourth Avenue. The site is fully developed at present. There's an existing commercial building that was substantially renovated and rehabbed back in 1997, pursuant to the site plan, major project site plan review that I just mentioned, that had two minor amendments that went with it. The existing building is 105,900 square feet in floor area. It's a large building. It's mostly one-story, although there is a two-story section sort of towards the back opposite of Kendrick Street. The existing, the existing building is currently set back 19.6 from the left sideline, as you're looking at it from Kendrick Street. And the reason I call that out is because that is one of several existing nonconformities. In 1997, when the building was renovated and redeveloped, there was no sideline setback in effect in the New England Business Center. In fact, the New England Business Center didn't exist as it does today. So at the time, it was fully lawful and conforming, but subsequently, there was a 20-foot sideyard setback imposed, so it is ever so slightly nonconforming. No work is being proposed on that side of the building, so it's not really an issue, but I point it out because, by virtue of that, we do need, one of the bits of relief we need is a special permit to alter a nonconforming structure. In addition to the existing building, there's also two existing parking areas on the site. There's a large parking area to the rear, the primary parking area, that is accessed off of Fourth Avenue. And then there's a smaller parking area to the front, which is accessed off of Kendrick Street. Now, essentially, the shell of the building, for the most part, is being left intact in terms of its location and general size. However, there are a number of changes that are being proposed. First, there's going to be two additions added to the building. A small addition to the front and a small addition to the rear. These two additions will provide new entry or vestibule areas that will improve the aesthetic of the building, as well as provide a better entry point on both the front and the back. I'm talking about Kendrick.
Kendrick.
Yes, yes. So, and let me, I should back up and say, all the materials that we've submitted, the way we're designated this, this property, is 63 Kendrick. In prior iterations before the board, back in 97, it was addressed as Fourth Avenue. However, the building carries legal address of both Fourth Avenue and Kendrick, and for the last several years at least, the Kendrick address has been sort of the more prominent, more used address. So we've stuck with that, and that's the address that we're using as the Kendrick. So when I say "front," I'm referring to Kendrick, all right? And side, and side would be Fourth Avenue. So, the two small additions. In addition, we're proposing to reconfigure, there's an existing loading area that's sort of in the rear right corner. This is sort of in the Fourth Avenue vicinity. That loading area will be reconfigured to allow both better loading, more versatile loading, but also to provide for trash compactor and trash removal. There is an existing open courtyard in the middle of the building, which you wouldn't be able to tell except from an overhead view. That existing open courtyard is going to be enclosed, and that will be folded into and made a part of the interior space of the building. Then, a new loading dock will be added to the left rear corner. Basically, the structural location of the building won't change, but there'll be a loading point added so that trucks can load and unload in that spot. All right? Then, on the-
That's pretty close to Fourth Avenue.
That's on the opposite side of Fourth Avenue.
It's here. It's here. Fourth Avenue here, and this is where-
Okay.
They have one here, and they're gonna add another one here. Natasha, would it be helpful if we brought up the plan?
Yeah, I have it here. I just didn't want it to be, and I'm looking at Artie's, but sure.
How do I go about sharing?
Um, I need to pull you over as a panelist, but I, I'm not sure whose name-
Mitchell Castle.
Sorry?
Mitchell Castle.
Second from the bottom, thank you. Yeah, I can't really see.
So the existing loading dock is the one that's next to Fourth Avenue?
That's right.
Okay, so that's what got me confused, okay. So the one that you're asking is for the one that's inset in the back of the building, but instead in the site?
Right. So the new one, you can actually see-
Right.
The single truck-
Yep.
To illustrate where the dock is there.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So, in the rear part of the building, you can see that line sort of to the left side of the, of the left part of the building, right? That designates where the break is, the two-story versus the one-story piece. In that two-story section, which right now is full two floors, a section of the second floor is going to be removed to leave a large space that's open from first floor all the way up to the ceiling. So there won't be any more second floor, any second floor there, it'll just be a large open area. Some of the second floor will be retained, but a large portion will be removed. Then, the exterior of the building, all the way around, is going to be upgraded and renovated, and then the parking areas are going to be, and the landscaping is going to be upgraded, and the front one's going to be altered a little bit in that the, there's a new patio kind of area that will be going in, that we'll get into as we go through the presentation. And as a part of that, the parking gets changed slightly, so there's, there's a couple less parking spaces in the front. But overall, the parking generally stays in the same location. It's sort of what's going on inside that changes. I do want to call out a couple aspects, additional aspects where the property is nonconforming, that we need additional special permit relief-
Can I just confirm something? You said there was going to be some addition on the front of the building, which was considered Kendrick. What was the addition on the front of the building? Are we looking at it here?
It's, yes, it's, you can see the cursor right there. It's a, it's a small vestibule.
Okay, just a little, that's it right there.
It's not really an addition either, it's already there. We're using the steel.
Yeah, so-
If you're just closing.
But I, we'll get into all the details as we get, get further on. I'm giving you the overlay first, and then we'll get into the details. And you'll see the renderings to give you an idea, because the plan set that was submitted doesn't necessarily, to the naked eye, show you really what's, what's going on in a two-dimensional format. So, but I do want to call out a couple of nonconformities that require unusual special permits that, as a part of the project. So, I've already mentioned the site setback. In addition, the front parking lot that is existing, that was approved as a part of the 1997 special permit, located less than 50 feet from the intersection of the exterior lines of Fourth Avenue and Kendrick Street. Under the, under the revisions to the New England Business Center zoning, it has to be at least 50 feet. So that is currently pre-existing nonconforming. The location of the parking is not changing, just the interior arrangement of the spaces, really just that center portion is getting changed. So therefore, we need a special permit to alter that. But in addition, the bylaw also provides a special permit to reduce that 50 feet down by as much as 25%, which would reduce it down to 37.5 feet, which is sufficient to meet the setback here. Then next, sticking with that, that parking lot in the front, it's supposed, there's not supposed to be any parking in the front of the building. All parking in the New England Business Center now is supposed to be located to the side or rear. Again, in 1997, that requirement didn't exist, so that front parking area on the Kendrick Street side is nonconforming as to that. So, to the extent that we're, you know, even restriping it, we need a special permit under 146 to do that. All right? And then, and then last, for landscaped open space on the site, the bylaw currently requires a minimum of 25%. And again, it didn't require that in 97. The existing site has 19.8% for landscaped open space. We're actually increasing that slightly to 19.9%. So while we're making, we're making it a little bit better, it's still conforming, so we need a special permit, again, under 146 to alter a pre-existing nonconformity.
Would that technical increase be coming from some of the parking's restripes, or from some change in that front semi-existing spot that's being now enclosed as an entrance?
I, it's a little bit of both. So, in, in order to do the renovations and reconfiguration of that sort of upper loading area that's off of Kendrick Street, the entryway had to be reconfigured, and there's some changes to the landscaping as a part of that. And then also with the patio and area in front, there's a little bit of additional landscaping there. All right? So, that's your overview. I painted it up with a broad brush, and now to drill down on the details, I'm going to first turn it over to Bill Madden.
Great, thanks, George. Hello, everyone. My name is Bill Madden, landscape architect at Lombardi Design. So David and I, we're going to sort of talk through the project in terms of architecture and landscape together, because we sort of view these things as being interwoven to the experience of the user, but also it's curb appeal from Kendrick and Fourth Street. The landscape is composed of essentially like three different types of elements, right? There's a landscape layer that's the renovation of the existing landscape, which is a lot of the, the tree canopy, the plant material that are, that's here, a lot of it is in decline. And because of poor species selection or just lack of maintenance, long-term. So, what we're doing is we're trying to renovate that, bring this landscape up to speed, so that we have a long-lived landscape for the next 50, 60 years. And then we're going to also focus on the Kendrick side of the, the site, the entry, and then the rear entrance as well.
I guess, talking more specifically about the front of the building, I'm David Silverman, architect with SD Design. There are currently two entrances at the front off of Kendrick Street, too, using Georgia's language, additions, right? And so we're actually removing those, that's some of the landscape comes from, and making only one center entrance. There is no interior fit-out at this point in the project. What we've been doing is working closely with Edgewater to kind of master plan a look at various scenarios for tenant of the space and of the building. I think the other thing that happened from a building standpoint, overall area, is that where the loading dock is on the north side, the new loading dock on the lower left of the building, that chunk of the interior is a double-height space where we're removing the floor to create higher head height. So the idea is that there might be a tenant in there, whether it's manufacturing or prototyping of materials, or they just need high base space. So that's why there would be a loading dock there. So I think our overall net square footage is reduced from what it used to be, even though we're taking out the center courtyard, we're taking out a floor, and, and that's where the delta is on the square footage. On, well-
Can I just, just confirm something? So, please, I mean, I don't have an issue with what's happening with the open space to change so far, but are you saying the 19.96% included the open courtyard before, or it didn't include the open courtyard before? Because now, I'm going to mention the courtyard for a second, so I'm just curious. Please, I mean, I, I'm fine with basically what's going on, I just want to know, I just want to know what the actual numbers represent. Is the open space, the existing open space including the courtyard? Is that is open space?
The original?
Well, the, the numbers now, or the original data, the numbers now?
Apparently it did.
So the, so the change of covering that over and then making a few changes in the front will have a, almost a negative change, or a couple of points higher, or fractions higher?
A point higher.
Right. Mitch, if you could go to the next slide? So we'll walk you around the building. We're going to start with the, the front sort of entry sequence. And so, you can see that there's a, the composition of this space is a sort of a formal entry to the building. You're seeing this overlap that looks a little strange, but it's just because of the perspective of the building, the area. There's a series of walls to create a sort of a garden kind of environment for the guests. It's composed of four benches, there's handicap parking stalls in the front with ADA access into these spaces, and then a sloped walkway to get up to the entrance of the building, and a series of three risers adjusting itself to, for the grade change from this small plaza. One of our interests was, if you know the existing building, it's very sort of, the facade is, it's very flat, and the experience is very flat. We wanted to have more of a gesture to the street, so it had a sense of sort of arrival and the architecture sort of lending itself out to the, to the parking lot.
So when you're, when you're in accessible parking space, you go through the, the plaza or the-
Correct. To get into it. Correct, yes. Yeah, so it'll be this aisle here, and it'll come up. And we, it's not a ramp, it's less, it's less-
One to 20?
Exactly, yeah.
But it's about, it's about 18 inches or two feet higher?
Correct, yeah, correct. If we go to the next slide, and then once we get to the perspectives, I think David can talk through this. So you can start to see that the, you know, the landscape is still, the intention is stretching out. In terms of some detail to this, like the material palette for the landscape component is board form, concrete walls, concrete pavers that are a hex shape, and then we have dark gray brick, concrete brick. The intention of the garden is to sort of create a space for people to rest, for tenants to come outside into this, this space, and they can sort of feel like they're separate from the vehicular traffic. There's trees that are being planted that can handle sort of salt and all the different conditions. We're thinking about this as a very urban-type maintenance component. So, the salts and the snow loads that are going to be happening in this with snow removal, that's sort of the top of mind in the selection of this, these plants. But in terms of the, the intent, we wanted to make this feel like it was integrated into the experience as you enter into the building.
So we don't have any existing photos to show you on the, on the screen here, but it was included in our packet. The existing building was last renovated in the mid-'90s, and it's a, the entire thing is stucco with a lot of joints and pattern, little pieces of granite inset in. So, we're keeping the stucco around the building, to the left where the 63 is. What we've been doing is working with the facade consultant that does work with EPIS and stucco, to clean up the joints and keep the control of joints, but make it look very modern and simple. And then, from the left corner where the 63 hits the building, that's a metal panel that's added, that goes over and above to the lower part on the right. The, so the metal panel is basically going to be there instead of the stucco. And then on the right-hand portion, we're actually using just a different color, gray, for the stucco wrapped around the corner. Again, just to break up the long, you know, the long facade. All the glasses, all the windows being replaced around the building. And then as we go forward, we'll talk more about how we're applying these same materials, so this material palette.
And this is just a, sort of at the pedestrian level. You can see the, the walls, the layers of planting, and sort of the framing of the architecture with the garden space. Go to the next slide. This is another view. Another view. And then you can see, so the, one of the, we're not showing this in the perspective, but one of the things in terms of the existing conditions of the parking lot, it was planted with Bradford pear trees that are all severe decline. It's a species that not most horticulturally sound people would think about using in a parking lot anyway. So we're taking this opportunity to plant a fastigiet species of red maple, which keeps the canopy sort of tight. So with the, the trucks that are entering the site, we're not concerned with them clipping the branches of the trees. But I wanted to point that out in terms of the planting of the medians or the islands. This view also shows that the, the repeat of the concrete hex paver in the rear, along with sort of grasses along either side of the, the entry of the building.
And then-
This was reviewed by, Design Review, right?
Yep.
And, because I know some of their comments were regarding plantings or something to that effect?
Yeah.
So has that been revised since then, or?
So there, the-
What, what are the concerns?
The, well, the, I would say the largest concern was the amount of lawn that we have in the front. And so they were, we can talk about that in a moment.
Picking up on what Bill was just saying about taking the landscape and bringing it to the rear, we did the same thing, obviously, with the treatment of the architecture. That's a metal panel applied to the building. The stucco, again, is a gray stucco. All of the windows, this is the existing fenestration pattern on the, on the back of the building, with the exception of the window that's over the entrance vestibule, which is, which proposes being new. And then we're adding, between the windows, to kind of add a little bit of fun and, you know, more interest, visual interest, we're adding these metal panels between the windows to kind of break it up a little bit. The other thing, I guess, I didn't mention yet, is the, around the building, there's kind of bump-ups of parapets that go around. We're removing those. Again, trying to get, trying to get rid of the '90s look.
Trying to simplify.
Yeah.
Is that the last slide, Matt? So Natasha, your question about the planting, Mitch, maybe if you go back to the plan, the first slide? So, the, the comment was a, was a good one. So there, there was an interest of sort of naturalizing the site. And so our, there's sort of two things that we were, as a landscape architect, I was like, I totally understand sort of that perspective, sort of being sort of friendly to the ecology. The challenge with that, there's sort of two challenges. One is the initial visual impact of more of a naturalized landscape. There would be a series of mulch beds, and there would be a lot of maintenance that would be put on the, the property owner's shoulders to maintain that, to develop it. The other thing from more of a contextual standpoint that we liked was that all of the, sort of the parcels are sort of lined by sort of these, these verdant green lawns. And, you know, our interest is to sort of knit this in with the community or this precinct of Needham. And, you know, we are doing a significant amount of new planting, so it's not like we want to ignore the notion of sort of greening this space. It's just the, the maintenance and the visual, it sounds crazy to say curb appeal, but the, really the curb appeal of this site, to have a naturalized edge versus lawn, we, you know, that wasn't really something that we were interested in in terms of executing this landscape. But that was, I would say that was their biggest interest. You agree with that, George? Yes?
So what's the process with that? Do you have to go back to them, and are you giving a proposal, or how, or?
So they actually approved the, the design as is, and they made, that was probably their biggest suggestion, they made a couple other smaller suggestions, but they made them as suggestions.
Okay.
But they did approve the, the set, the plan set as proposed.
Okay.
So we're prepared, so we wanted to give you guys an overview, visual, you know, sort of these perspectival overview. We also have plans if you want to refer to anything specific. I don't know if we want to open this up for questions or comments now.
I think, I'd like for the board members to, if they have any questions now, Justin, do you want to start, or?
Yeah, no, I'm just in reviewing this in the presentation, I don't have any questions that come to mind right now. Thank you.
One question that I had was, the trees that you have in the front, off Kendrick Street, you've got two that are right near the, the building, and I was, and I couldn't understand from the, from the package, you know, having two trees that I tended to think would stand out in a wide canopy until you mentioned that. When you were talking in the rear, and it's clear that it's the same type of tree-
Correct.
-which is a really smart decision, because you get growth, you get color, you get seasonality. But you, A, you don't have to worry about trucks clipping it, and B, you can have it in a, in a tucked-in position and not worry about having to like, you know, constantly prune those branches, and then ultimately have a tree that just kind of grows out on one side and fails. So, I thought the intention, I thought it showed a lot of intention, and I liked the approach. I understand the challenge in the greening on that corner, and I think that makes sense. I think overall, it's an absolute improvement to the, to the property and to, and to the neighborhood. And it looks like you're trying to reposition, re-market the, you know, the building and so on. One question I had when I saw the discussion about the uses in your, in your letter was the potential for light manufacturing. And I wanted to understand a little bit more about, if you have an example of a type of tenant you may be marketing to.
Yeah, so, the intent, as George initially said, is to keep the professional office use, however the tenants we are going to be marketing to, we anticipate them having that light manufacturing and assembly component. So, examples of that would be clean technology, clean energy, robotics, automation, really any kind of engineering. And these tenants prefer single-story space with an elevated clear height, so that they have more flexibility, so they can use that space as traditional office, they can do their ass- their assembly or their manufacturing and keep it all under one roof. And they have varying heights that they like, hence why we, why we enclosed the courtyard to get that added single story and then also took out a part of the floor assemblies so that we have several clear heights that we can offer.
So if you're marketing that, I'm wondering, you've got 150, 160,000 square feet. Do you have an idea roughly how much of that 160,000 square feet would then be devoted to that potential for light manufacturing?
Yeah, I would say roughly in the one-third to maybe forty, forty-five percent would be my guess.
That's cool.
Certainly not more than 50.
And then, George, you were, you were mentioning in your parking calculation, I think that that was based on 100% office use, right? So the parking demand would potentially be reduced based on some lab or industrial-type engineering use. And as well, that would affect the traffic patterns because that type of operation would be happening at a different hour. There is considerable concern in the heights recently about a rise in rodent activity. So the Department of Health has, you know, has made some comments about the ordinary type of rodent patrol, you know, that, you know, that we have. And I presume that you guys have looked at it and you'll continue to maintain even during construction or renovation and demolition, that whole process, a robust pest control process.
Yeah, as part of our standard practice for management of a similar type property, we have a pest contract in place and we would continue that during construction.
Great.
That being said, we haven't noticed, in five months of ownership, we haven't noticed activity, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
But absolutely would continue that practice during construction and certainly after.
Appreciate you being mindful of that. And it's, you know, it's, it looks like a great project. It'll be an improvement and excited to see what kind of tenants you can, you know, we can bring in and thank you very much. I don't want any further comments.
Thanks, Adam. Artie?
I just, again, I like the project. I think it's great that you're coming in and doing some rehab on the building and looking for what you can pull in to Needham. Again, I like the project. I just like math to work. And I just want to go back to the open space. The math doesn't, I don't see how the math works when you have a fairly large courtyard in the middle of the building. And now you're changing some minor changes to the outside of the building, you know, a couple of square feet here and there as far as what's happening with the, with the, how many lawn, what the plantings are, not the plantings are, but you're eliminating a fairly large courtyard in the middle. You're saying there's virtually no change in the total green space, including that and that, including that. And I don't see how that's possible. Again, the project, I like it, it's nice. I just don't see how the math works. You know, I'm just, I'm not seeing the spots on the outside of the building where that grass is being, where that green space is being added to make up for a lot of green space.
You have less, less parking spaces, so you have thirty less parking spaces or something to that effect.
Well, let's, well, I mean...
So that becomes green space.
Well, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not, okay.
Right, so that becomes, sorry, that becomes part of the building.
That's, that's fine, I'm just, I'm not...
Well, but Artie, you know, I guess the question is, you did ask the question, is the interior courtyard open space, but it's not really green space, is it?
Yeah, I'm just going to say if you were to pull, were to pull the overhead view of the courtyard, it's mostly stamped concrete, which is, which is inexcusable.
Right. So the green space that we're talking about, the 19.6 versus 19.9%.
I like math to work, too.
And Artie, one little...
The whole courtyard.
One little minor detail, and in terms of the square footage, all of, so the site is essentially sort of sidewalks everywhere. All the sidewalks are gone and now they're being green, so we're planting them. So that was one of the aspects and you know, as, and there is that, the other little small little wedge, and that's what George was saying, is sort of everywhere. This little zone right here, in terms of square footage, is significant to what the existing condition was. So it's sort of bits and pieces sort of everywhere that create that aggregate.
Well, if we're not count, if we're not literally not counting the whole courtyard and just a few bushes and trees that are within it, then the math can work.
Yes.
Okay. Then the math works. Okay. Just want to make sure.
Anything else, Artie? Or you'll say?
No, I don't.
Paul?
I have no questions, just, George, a really good presentation, very thorough. Thank you.
And I agree, and I think it's a huge improvement, especially for people that are parking in front of the building, able, being able to get into the building in a universal way, I think is great and cleaning the building up, so.
I just have a quick comment, which is that the coverage, the traffic flow to be off of Fourth Avenue, I, I've been on Kendrick Street during rush hour and I would imagine if somebody is coming out of that building and wants to take a left turn onto Kendrick Street, it's going to be awfully difficult.
I would venture, yes, just from our period of ownership now, most of the traffic used now does go to Fort Ave. And I think it'll probably be more visitor parking in the front, but with employees likely migrating towards the back.
As well, at that, that corner.
Yeah, we heard about potentially an updated traffic study in the area as well and potentially have a light one there.
We've promised that for a few years now, so.
Well, we're happy to cooperate. Whatever we can do to assist that.
That is going to go on, though.
Oh, that's right, we got our traffic guy here.
We got our, we've got our guy.
The person who put the wrong way sign right in front of my driveway.
Thanks, Paul. So Lee, do you have any questions or?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so with that, we need to open it up for public comment. And so I see that there are a lot, there are a lot of people here and a lot of people online. I'm sure this is not the highest priority tonight, but it is for us right now, so. So as we open a public comment, I would like to remind attendees of our ground rules for public hearings to ensure an accurate public record and to enable a fair platform to hear from our neighbors. So please state your name and address clearly for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes so we can hear from as many people as possible. If you have multiple points to make and need more time, we will genuinely attempt to return to you after others that have not spoken are given a chance to speak. Please address your comments through the chair. Simply saying that you agree with a previous speaker is a great way to have your voice heard while making time available to hear from our other neighbors. Unless a question can be easily answered by a board member, staff, and the applicant, we may ask staff to note your question so that we can review, consider, and subsequently answer it. And you can also provide comments and writing by email to planning@needmm.gov. So with that, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to comment? Okay. Anyone online with any public comment? There doesn't seem to be anyone. One last chance. Okay, so.
I'm sure I remember the hearing.
Okay, so motion to close the hearing by Adam, second by Justin.
I just have one question. Are we waiting to hear from the design review board?
No, we haven't, we haven't seen it back yet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I asked originally.
Well, I don't recall seeing their stamp on there.
Okay, you're right.
So, so have we received it?
We have, we have, we have, we have, we need to get a number of them. There's a memo and a stamp, applicant.
Great, excellent, good.
Okay, so with that, any comments or questions, or is that the only one? Okay, so is there a motion to close a hearing? And so the steps is to be able to, I'll have a, have a decision by?
By the next planning board meeting.
Okay, in two weeks?
If that's when it is, yes.
We had a motion, we had a seconded, we stepped.
Okay, so, so, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so the motion carries and so then we go forward in two weeks to have a decision, a draft decision for it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First one to the table?
Okay.
I went to, moved, went to private school, moved to Western in 2001. Right on, as waterway. Oh, nice. Just skating on that pond, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, I say yours now. Yeah, I would imagine that doesn't happen. People try to skate on schlossing.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so the second item is the transfer of permit for major project site plan, special permit number 2008-01 for the frozen custard, New England, Abbots to frozen custard, Boston. So, hello.
Hello.
So please state your name and...
My name is Bill Ziole, Z like zebra, E-O-L-I. I live at 382 South Street, also right here, around the corner. And here about what's known as Abbots Frozen Custard at 934 Great Plain Avenue, and people are shaking their head affirmatively that they like the frozen custard. I am privileged to have bought the business from the previous owner. Was fortunate enough that she chose me amongst many applicants who were interested in the business and I wish to continue running the business as is, under the conditions of the previous special permit. There are no changes whatsoever. Why change something so successful? I don't plan on doing any renovation or, or any work whatsoever. It's just strictly a paper change of ownership.
Okay. And Lee, do you have any concerns?
No, we don't. He's, he's given us the documentation we asked, what we normally ask for and he's acknowledged the existing permit and agreed to abide by its conditions. And so we prepared a draft decision for the board to sign tonight, which would actually transfer the permit under the conditions of the existing permit.
Okay. Any questions from any of the board members?
I have a 12-year-old and so we're often there. And I remember the previous staff sometimes would like, you know, would give a little, if we walked up there with our dog, they'd give a little paw cop or something.
Are you asking for freebies?
I would just...
I'm just kidding.
Isn't Chris...
Should we go into, should we go into executive?
The town lawyer's going to be here, Adam.
I'm looking, I, what I was about to say was that, of course, we paid for it and we continue to expect to pay for it, but they were, I...
I'm just kidding, Adam, but I was trying to figure out where you were going. You were getting free samples.
But I, as, anyways, and so they, so the staff was always really great with, with kids and with, you know, even with pets and stuff and, you know, we wish you the, you know, the best of success, you know, with, with the ownership because it's a, it's a great, it's a great little business and it's a great addition to the area, to that section of the town. And hopefully in time we'll see, you know, greater foot traffic, you know, which would be a boon as well, you know, to that and to other retail businesses.
I'm very excited about the renovation from the town hall and what that could bring to the central business district, for sure.
We have a great location with a couple of the restaurants right next door that don't, as far as I know, they don't really have much dessert.
One of the, one of the things that an owner of a dessert business looks for is existing restaurant space. And I counted the number of restaurants within walking distance of that district. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah.
I'm so excited that a local person also purchased it, so.
Yep.
Paul, any questions?
No, ready to make a motion.
Okay.
So I move that we consent to the requested transfer of the permit with regard to Abbots Frozen Custard.
Second.
So motion by Paul, seconded by Adam. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So the next, so Lee, what?
I move that we approve, the decision is drafted.
Perfect. So, is there a second?
Need a second. Second.
Okay, so Paul approves, the decision is drafted, Artie seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so thank you very much. So I think we have it here, so...
Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck. Sounds great.
Adam, older one in London.
Yeah.
Adam, just make sure you pick up after your dog. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now being charged double.
And Adam gets charged a double.
No problem. Ice cream for everyone here. Honey!
On, on Adam.
Executive session. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, so the next item for discussion is the discussion and vote to submit to the select board the set of zoning amendments known as the base compliance plan to initiate the process of amending the zoning bylaws in accordance to MGL 48, section 5. So before we begin, I just want to just give a big picture on this. And we have a letter from the state also that I'd like to, to read. The first thing is just process and what our purview is, to make sure that everybody understands, to see where we are. And I see that there are a significant amount of people online also. So, big picture was the planning board put together two plans, the base compliance plan and they put together the neighborhood plan as two plans to move forward to town meeting as a warrant, as warrant articles. The two plans went to town meeting. The base plan was almost unanimously accepted. The neighborhood plan was 57% of the people that voted accepted it. There was a referendum, and I'm just kind of going through the process because we're going to talk about process moving forward. There was a referendum and that referendum got enough votes to be able to go to a town vote. The town voted, about 58% of the town voted and to repeal what town meeting had approved. And now we're at a point where we had to go back the day after that happened, we, the town manager, Fitzpatrick, reached out to EOHLC to understand, because some of the things had changed, to understand what we needed to do to move forward to comply. So we got, so she did that the day after. Chris Kluckman from EOHLC submitted an email on Tuesday, January 21st, that said that he is writing to clarify the town of Needham's compliance status with GLC 40A, section 3A, after residents voted to repeal a multifamily zoning district adopted at town meeting that would have complied with the law. EOHLC's emergency regulations, which became effective on January 14th, 2025, S760 CMR 72.00, provide additional time for communities that missed prior deadlines or did not have compliance zoning in effect by prior deadlines to come into compliance. So under the regulation, commuter rail communities that don't currently have compliance zoning in effect, such as Needham due to the results of the referendum, have two deadlines, to submit a new action plan by February 13th of 2025 and to submit a district compliance application by July 14th of 2025. Then Needham can re-enter interim compliance with section 3A by submitting an action plan by February 13th and having it approved by EOHLC. The community's action plan must show steps they plan to take to have compliance zoning by July 14th of 2025, which must be approved by EOHLC. If approved, Needham will be in interim compliance until July 14th, 2025. And EOHLC encourages the town to submit an action plan as soon as possible. It can be found on MBTA Community's website or by the direct link that they sent. So with that, the select board voted on a recommendation to go forward with the base compliance plan and that needs to be submitted to the state in the form of an action plan by February 13th. Right, Lee, this is?
That's correct.
And so the, the big picture here is do we agree with this and we need to vote on it? So with that, I want to get comments from, oh, one piece that I do want to say that is not in the purview of the planning board, I believe, is when town meeting occurs, that is in the purview of the select board and, and Michael Fee, the moderator. So...
It's my understanding that the select board, you know, endorsed the base compliance plan and asked the planning board to move forward with that, with the supplemental to the state by the February date and that they've decided to advance this at the May annual town meeting and that's what the plan is.
Okay. But, but the planning board doesn't have anything to do with that because we, actually, before we, we go into, I'd like to, we receive a significant amount of correspondence this month and I'd like to, I know we usually do it at the end, but because a lot of it was related to this, I just want to go through which correspondence we received. So we've received correspondence from Laura Dorfman, Joe Matthews, Bob Smart, Joe Leghorn, and I apologize if I'm missing anyone's name, Mona Steinberg from Maggie Abruzzi, Andrea Danenberg, Andrea Okerholm, Hutlin, Paul Bennett, Zachary Wallach, Ed Wallach, Jim Van Dyke, Marcus Loveland, Mike Kelly, Donna Meyer, James and Jean Higging, Catherine Spalding, Gabby Gutierrez, Riley Hastings, Nathan Levin, Jackie Kylie, Stephen Maxwell, Ken Buckley, Robbie Petrie, David Greenus, Paula Dickerman, Kathy Merz, Amy Mercer, Nicholas Corless... Robbie Petrie, David Greenus, Paula Dickerman, Kathy Merz, Amy Mercer, Nicholas Corliss, Vincent Janet Victoria, Lucas Mastrow, Janice Klein, Tracy Rubin, Asher Schacter, Julie Trob, and Arthur Cantor, Simon Trob, Noreen McQuaid, James Blackwell, Kimberly McCollum, Jane Bolden, Oscar Mertz, Ralph Winters, Katie Doonan, Bruce Wolfeld, Charles H. Hogan, Richard Epstein, Katherye Hogan, Donna Cressence, Dustin and Tiffany Paveer, Erin Hollander, Bill and Kathleen Leahy, Sean Robbins, and Ariel DeBarrios, Cindy Wolf, Catherine Carroll, Christopher Palacinski, Garia Jamie, Lynn Collins Stratford, Olga Batura, Pavel Bandrichuk, Erin Potentas, Eileen Orsham, and Louis Wolfson. So I just wanted to make sure that we read that before, so that everybody knows that we have received a significant amount of correspondence related to mostly these issues, other issues as well. So with that, I think I wanted to hear from all the board members. Again, I think that for the first piece is, do we agree with this? And we need to vote on it.
I am in full agreement that we should move forward with the base plan, as already drafted and as already passed by town meeting, as you mentioned, almost by unanimous vote. For us to now make changes to the base plan would require, well, would probably require a reconvening of the home committee. We would have additional meetings, additional hearings. This, the base plan has already been approved by the, what's it, is it the EOH?
EOHLC.
LC. You know, they've already had it, they've already approved it. And if we want to increase it, if we wanna change it, we can do it later, in the future, and fully vet it. We don't have time to make changes at this point. So I'm in full agreement with submitting the base plan by February 13th, whatever we need to submit by then. Whether we have a special town meeting earlier than May, having it in May, if it's the base plan that's in front of town meeting, I don't see where, from what I've seen of the correspondence, that will not generate another referendum. I'm sure it will pass, will be in compliance by July 13th. I think to a large extent, we lucked out that the Supreme Judicial Court ruled that the original guidelines were defective in process, which extended everything out, which gave us time. And we're going forward. A major reason why I'm in favor of this is because the town is going forward and trying to get funds that are not available to us if we're not in compliance. And so I think it's very important that we make sure that we're in compliance. We are in temporary compliance as we go along, and we wanna be in compliance after July 13th. So that's the easiest and the most direct route to get there. And so, yes, I'm in full favor of that.
All right. Ernie?
Yeah, I'm in total agreement. I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with anything other than the base plan going forward. That being said, in the future, I will, I'd be more than happy to look at other possibilities of what we could do for housing in the future, but not now, not leading up to the May town meeting. I would be completely against anyone trying to do something at May town meeting that was trying to amend it in any way at all. That goes completely against what's in Needham's best interest and what we should be doing now. As far as timing, I mean, I do, I do feel it's personally, it's in the Needham's best interest to vote on the base plan before the May town meeting. It is not our decision. I think I would encourage them to change it, to have it sooner, because we did tell the town we wanted to do something sooner. And then that way, if we do it now, we get it off everyone's plate. We get it off our plate, we get it off the public's plate, and then we can just keep moving forward with what we have to do. The other things we're working on, notice, Muzzy May came back, Muzzy might come back with some other plans for housing. There's work, there's talk about that. We'd like, I'd like to work on that. I'd like to not worry about this anymore. It's had a negative effect on the town. That being said, it had a negative effect in town. It didn't necessarily have to have, because we are going, we are going to be in compliance. We are going to be doing something. So it's in our best interest to do something. I think sooner rather than later is, has value to it. That being said, the first critical thing is, we all, we all go forward with only the base plan. That's the most critical thing. The second critical thing is, doing it sooner rather than later has value to the town of being done with it, and has a positive effect on the town, in my opinion.
Thanks, Artie.
I just, I just wanna point out that the original plan to have a special town meeting at the end of February, the beginning of March, was made before the Supreme Judicial Court ruled. And if, if, if the Supreme Judicial Court had ruled that the guidelines were fine, I would, we would have to go forward earlier.
If we were out of compliance.
Right, right. In order to get into compliance as quickly as possible. But it was a change in the law that gives us the breathing room to not have the town incur the expense of a special town meeting, to have all the town meeting members, you know, need to... It's, it can be difficult to run a special town meeting, other than the usual one that we have at the end of October, the beginning of November. So, you know, we did, if we're going forward with the base plan, I don't think, I don't think it's really gonna matter whether it's sooner rather than later. I don't, I don't see it's changing. There are some people in town who wanna see it further expanded. We can't, we can't go that route. I'll just say this, because I'm not gonna be on the board after, after April. If we're going to expand, to have more housing, more apartment housing like this plan, we can do it in a way other than conforming to the MBTA, do it by special permit, even if it's in the MBTA district. You know, and, and there are other overlay districts that we can have. It doesn't have to be through the MBTA law specifically. We do need more housing. The Commonwealth needs more housing. The nation needs more housing. And, you know, think globally, act locally. We should be doing our part, but one step at a time.
Well, there are certainly some flaws. And some of the flaws I saw in the larger one was brought on because of the guidelines of the MBTA Community Act, where to have to conform to that. We can, we can, we can, we now, luckily, we have this, the state coming back and saying, yes, don't rush it. You can take a little bit more time. It is important to make sure that we move forward with expeditious as possible. I don't, I'm not basing this on the 50-something letters we got, whatever amount it is, we're majority of them, we're, go for the base and go for it now, or specialist town meeting versus not. I'm basing it on, I'm basing my thoughts on, that's what, that's what people were seeing. Granted, life is organic, things change, so we don't have to, we don't have to do it then to stay in compliance. But that's what, that's what people were seeing. That's what people were expecting. And again, we have other things to work on. That being said, we can, we can do, we can do a lot of great things here in town with additional housing going on to the future. We don't have to abide by the MBTA Community Act. We have other parks in town heading over to the other part, other side of 128, other spots we can work on, and maybe the Muzzy site. So we can have a lot, we can have more housing that's going on with the, with the base plan. We probably even have more housing that's going on potentially with the, with the neighborhood plan. But the other housing going on, maybe it'll be 55-plus, maybe it'll be something which will not have the same fear factor of the school, impact on the schools than what the neighborhood housing plan had, but will actually bring something into town. So we can do more, we can do better, and we'll do better. But we just wanna move forward and move forward as expeditiously as possible. And, but keep, try to keep, make sure that we're, we're one community moving forward, and we all wanna do better than what we have. That's the main thing. We're one, we're one community moving forward, and we find a way to do better than what we've had. And that's the key.
Thanks, Artie. Okay, Adam?
I know the town spent a long time, like, how long were you at home for, a year and a half or something? On developing a pretty thoughtful zoning reform designed to meet what Paul was saying as the underlying goal of the Commonwealth, which is to ultimately create more housing. I'm not entirely convinced, just being in development and having been on the board for a few years, that in and of itself, the special permit has been the determining factor or the mitigating factor against housing development. I know that's, that's kind of the premise of the MBTA Communities law. I think that, I hope, that the town will be open to, you know, looking to achieve some more housing, but in a way that perhaps provides the town with greater control in the process, that there is more robust oversight, perhaps. You know, there are some great opportunities that we were hamstrung in the timeframe that we had in order to get into compliance. Like, I think about, you know, Jay Durenzo's plan for 888 Great Plain, which we've talked about before as a board. And, you know, my position has, you know, has always been the same, that that dimensional regulation scheme, that FAR, I think is appropriate for the area, but it shouldn't just be for one site. It should probably be for a larger stretch of Great Plain. And I think that, I'd like to see us work towards that, and again, in a way that affords the town some greater, greater control in the process. I would have liked, in particular, that the planning board had an opportunity to participate in that discussion, instead of the select board just telling us what they're expecting of us. As a matter of process, I think it's important that, you know, we recognize our own, our own jurisdiction within town. But, you know, it could be, you know, a function of several factors, but I think at this time, it makes sense to go ahead with the base compliance plan for May, so that we're not out of compliance, and that we can preserve every advantage in the applications that we have before a number of Commonwealth, before a number of state agencies. So, you know, that makes sense, and, you know, I support that.
Still my thunder on process, but first, I do support the base compliance plan. I do have, I do take umbrage with, from a process purist perspective, that zoning, you know, should be coming from the planning board, and we weren't able to get the opportunity to come to this decision, you know, which I think is the right decision, based on the referendum and based on, on, on... But, so I do support the compliance plan, but that was just with the, you know, the process, I don't think is, was, was right, because I think that we should be given our own way to get to that point. With that being said...
I second that motion.
What's that?
I second that motion.
It's, it's whatever. It is what it is. You know?
I'm in full agreement that...
This is just rubber stamping something that's been given to us.
This is, this is a planning, this should have been a planning board decision, and instead, the select board decided to act first, and they should have deferred to us to act first. And then, they should be rubber stamping what we send to them.
But with, with that being said, you know, I do support, you know, the initial compliance plan, I think, which is important from a compliance perspective. As you know, I serve on many different committees, one of which is, has to do with traffic and transportation. And obviously, the TIP funding that was being put through is $20 million of funding for, you know, for Highland Ave signal, signal implementation and intersection replacements, which is vital to this town, as well as other funding that was put through from the Housing Authority. You know, and it's, obviously, we have the, we have the state that's allowing that timeframe to be, to be extended, which is great. But we do, we do need to be in compliance. And to echo Adam's point, I think we need to, and others, we need to look toward smart planning and zoning that will, you know, allow for both housing and commercial development, first floor development, that we'll be able to, on some sort of overlays, that will increase the foot traffic for the custards, so you can get your free ice cream. That will then do, that will then, you know, kind of help toward diversification of our retail storefronts, et cetera, with higher increased foot traffic. But either way, for right now, I do support the proposed, prescribed motion for us to vote on.
Thank you, Natasha.
I agree with, with the support for the base plan. I also agree with the process. I feel like the process was not what I thought would have occurred, and I think we would have ended up in the same place, but I just agree with you. I do, Artie, I do agree with some, some of the stuff that you were saying about the fact that moving forward, looking at opportunities for how to do it in the right places with not feeling pressure from the MBTA Communities. But I do wanna say, this whole negative effect on the town bothers me. And the reason why it bothers me is because we put forth two plans that we believed in. And there were two different, we had 58% vote one way, 57% vote the other way. We put two plans so that town meeting could vote. There were coffees at every precinct for voters to come. We did everything that we could to get all the information out. Town meeting voted, others didn't agree, a referendum happened, all of it was democratic. So the whole negative effect on the town, I don't understand where that's coming from, if it's a democratic process, that ended up with the solution that the town wanted in the end. So I'm hoping that there could be some future, you know, I mean, that there could be some consensus moving forward, but how to come together as a town. But I don't think that the process that we had, putting out two plans for the town to vote on them, you know, was, was, was not democratic or the right thing to do.
Well, you know what's interesting, Natasha? I think many times, many times, people start to have a negative feeling, and they don't feel as though they've been heard. And through this, what's interesting through this whole process is, it's been very bothersome in general, but in everything that happens, what can you pull that's good out of it? I think, I think there's something to be, to be pulled, nice to be pulled out of, and that is, people have spoken up, there's been negative aspects going on, but, you know, what can we learn? What can we, what can we do to change in the future? Maybe there's something we should, maybe there's something obvious we should change, maybe it's not. But this, this being happened did bother me, but there's some, there's probably some way for us to pull something good out of it.
Maybe town meeting members need to have more conversations with their constituents, so that when they get to town meeting, they're voting based on what they're, I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't think that, I think we needed to give two options, I think people needed to vote, and so that, that's the piece that I don't feel, I don't know, that it's, it bothers me that it's negative when we've been going through a democratic process.
It's a very frustrating situation. You know, in the 10 years, the nine and a half years that I've been on the board, Jean McKnight is here with us, she was on the board for 15 years, we always have this problem, where, you know, we, we have meetings, we have, we have neighborhood meetings, we have town-wide meetings. They are advertised as best as we can. You know, there's only so far we can go. We can't, we don't have the funds to send postcards to every house in Needham every time there's a meeting, saying there's a meeting on this project, this zoning bylaw, whatever it is, that's in front of the town, you know, we're letting you know. It's, that's an impossibility. We can advertise it as best we can, and we have, I think, reformed it or tailored it as best we can, and yet we still have people who either show up at town meeting or show up after town meeting and say, why weren't, why wasn't the populace informed? Well, you know, there's only so much we can do. And unfortunately, you know, you know, maybe in another 15 years, we'll tinker at some more and we'll get to, to something, but it's, I, I think it's an issue that we're always going to have, unfortunately. And, you know, we have to...
I mean, I get it in, in traffic and transportation, and sometimes we do an improvement, and suddenly there is an uproar, a ground swell of objection because of somebody doesn't, maybe they weren't a fan of, you know, a double yellow line, or whatever that may be, and there's a...
Or you lost a tree that all of a sudden, people, you know, I've seen that.
But this was, you know what I mean? But that...
Yeah, traffic, traffic does study, and all of a sudden, you took down that beautiful tree that's been here for 200 years.
It's the ideal of like, how, at what point are we, are we obligated to, and using this phrase, spoon-feed government to, to the masses? Because it really comes down to, like, we have various sources that we, that we use, various channels, but it doesn't always reach, because there are people who are just so busy in their lives. You know what I mean? I'm only choosing to become actively engaged, and I've done since 2015, but that's, that's a choice that I've done. There are people who, who have lives and, and, and jobs, and they're just not necessarily in, in tune with, with what's going on until suddenly, suddenly, there is this ground swell of, and somebody brings up something, and suddenly, some information is right or not, and misinformation spreads, and disinformation spreads, and sometimes, it's the right information, but it's still like, well, why wasn't I involved in this from the beginning? Well, it's been going on for a year and a half. Like, I get that.
My, my only regret of the process, and I don't know how we could have fixed it, and part of it was, I think, the way Michael Fee needed to do the process, and we really didn't have time, I think, to discuss whether the process could have been changed, is that unfortunately, we didn't have a process where, if the neighborhood plan lost by referendum, the basic plan automatically went into effect.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the referendum had to go to the whole thing.
That's because it was additive.
That's right. That's right.
We thought that it would either, the, the base plan would win, or the neighborhood, you know, one or the other would be chosen.
But then Michael Fee said, you can't do it that way after...
But because it was added in.
It was merged, it was merged like a few days ahead of time, and I guess no one, no one had thought...
No, it wasn't merged.
No, 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 I mean, Michael Fee said, several, several days before the town meeting...
It's because of the charter.
No, I understand that. Several days before, Michael Fee said, why, we have to do it this way to amend, we have to vote it this way, which then set up, which is maybe...
Because of the town charter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it was, it was, if there were two separate plans, completely separate, then they could have been voted on separately, I believe, and I see Chris Eep is here. But, but because they were add-ons, in the way that it was written, and in the way that other towns have written, because, and I do want to say, after all I just said about this, this is a very complicated issue, super complicated for even those of us that are following it on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, the information as it was coming out, some of the stuff was, I mean, we just had a whole revision happen. So, I want to thank everyone in the town for being so passionate, on whatever side they were, you know, that they're on, because it takes, it, it's, it's very thoughtful what, what, all the, all the letters that we received and all the comments that we received. So, with that, I just wanted to thank the board and thank the town for, for all of the work that's been done in the past couple of years. It's a lot, and it was, it was imposed on us, and we're really trying to do our best.
Adam, Chair, I have a motion to that effect. I move the planning board support the submission of an action plan for interim compliance to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which will consist of advancing the base compliance plan to town meeting in May of 2025. Second.
Okay, so motion by Adam.
I would like to just amend that to say, in May 2025, or such earlier time as the warrant commission may prescribe.
I would agree with that.
Is it okay with that?
Yeah.
Sure. I don't think it could be material, but sure.
Okay. So, your motion with Paul's amendment?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Adam, amendment by Paul.
Yeah, we can vote before we vote. I mean, I know, I know I'm going against an avalanche. It's hard to stop an avalanche when it's coming, and I get it, I can appreciate that.
So, you don't want to vote?
No, no, I'm gonna vote, no, I'm gonna vote, no, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote. No, but we have discussion before we vote.
Okay, okay.
That, this discussion before we vote, that's all. That is that, I know, there's the avalanche for the May town meeting, and I can appreciate that. I, I just, I just want to say that again, I think, is, I'm glad you added, there's something in there, some additional possibility in there, because I think there is some benefit to the town...
Yeah, but it's not up to us.
But it's not up to us, and that's why we can't...
I understand it's not, I understand it's not up to us, that means it's not up to us to put May, May in the, in our motion as well. But I'm just saying that there is a benefit to the town of doing it sooner, and I can appreciate why some people don't, but there is a benefit of going sooner. But I'm glad we talked about a lot of things that were going on, because this, again, there's, we can pull some positive things out of what's happened.
Right.
And, but, because the democratic process prevailed, and that's what we're going through.
Thanks, Artie.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, so, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, great, so that's, that motion passed. Okay, so the second motion is moving the, so someone has to make the motion to move that the planning board submit to the select board and the set of proposed zoning amendments known as the base compliance plan, to initiate the process of amending the zoning bylaws in accordance with MGL 48, Section 5, first paragraph.
So moved.
That's great. Is there a second?
Second.
I think we all firsted, I don't know, who's gonna second it?
That was great. I've never had that happen before. Okay, so who wants to, who wants to make the motion?
That was Artie's motion.
Artie, Artie.
Justin, you want the motion?
It doesn't matter.
Artie for the avalanche.
I'll take the second.
You get to, Artie, motion by Artie, second by Justin. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so both, both of them passed. Anything else, Lee, do you want to talk about timeline in general?
Yeah, so the schedule is, since you voted this, that it will go to the selectmen at their next meeting.
Select board.
Select board, to refer the article back to us for purposes of holding a hearing, and the legal notice for this will run on January the 30th, and again, on February the 6th. And the hearing on the two zoning articles will be held on February the 13th.
And then we make a recommendation on the article that will be presented at town meeting, right?
Yes, after, after the hearing, the planning board will make a recommendation on the articles in advance of the town meeting.
Okay. Any questions, or? Okay, well, thank you very much for that.
February 13th is in Broad Meadow School.
That's good to know.
You mean Broad Meadow?
Yeah. I, I might need to, I just confirm that today, so I'll add it, but...
Well, I'd just say that, I'm glad to hear that, because the heat is better at Broad Meadow than it is in Powers Hall.
So, wear layers?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. This is for both of you.
Yes.
Okay, so with that, item number five is the discussion on ADUs, so Chris Eep is here to talk to us about...
Hello, Brad.
Good evening, Chris.
Hello.
So, we talked about how you...
What's that?
Do you want us to wait for you, please?
If you get away, just my name's on the...
He's just getting a drink really quick. Okay.
All right. All right, so hello, everyone. I am here tonight to talk about changes to the law at the state level relative to accessory dwelling units. And just by way of some quick background, Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024 amended Chapter 40A, Section 3, to provide new protections for accessory dwelling units in single-family zoning districts. As you're all aware, Chapter 40A, Section 3, is the section of 40A that we refer to as the Dover Amendment, and it's the one that protects educational uses, religious uses, solar, childcare facilities, and several other uses. ADUs have been added to the set of uses that are now protected by Section 3. Now, what that, Chapter 150 of the Acts of 24 did is add a new paragraph to Section 3, and that paragraph does a number of things, but principally, it states that cities and towns cannot, in their local zoning, prohibit an ADU, unreasonably restrict an ADU, or require a special permit for an ADU in a single-family zoning district. And an ADU is defined as a self-contained housing unit with a separate entrance from their principal dwelling, that is sized at less than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. The changes to Section 3 that we're going to be discussing tonight go into effect, the, was passed last year, but have not gone into effect yet. The changes to the law will go into effect on February 2nd, and the current state of the law at the state level is that EO HLC was tasked in the statutory change with coming up with regulations to implement this change in law. EO HLC released draft regulations in December, and they have said that they expect to issue, issue final regulations before February 2nd, but those have not come out yet. So, what we are working with, and this is true of Needham, and this is true of every other city and town in Massachusetts, what we're working with presently is draft regulations, with the expectation that final will come out soon. So, let me quickly walk you through what is included in the draft regulations. The regulations contain a list of type of regulations that are considered, that are absolutely prohibited, and these are the list of prohibited types of regulations as it applies to accessory dwelling units. Prohibited regulations include a requirement that either the principal dwelling or the ADU be owner-occupied, can no longer require that of an accessory dwelling unit.
Or the, or the main building?
Neither one. You can require that neither principal or accessory be occupied by the owner.
Neither one has to be occupied.
Neither one, neither one can be required to be occupied by the owner. So, someone who owns a single-family lot with a principal dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit could, in theory, rent both of them.
To different people.
To different people.
That are unrelated.
Correct. So, that's the first category of prohibited regulation. Second category is a requirement that the ADU be attached to the principal dwelling. So, in the draft regulations, a town cannot prohibit detached accessory dwelling units. You must allow both attached and detached accessory dwelling units. Also prohibited is a requirement that an ADU have more than one additional parking space if that ADU is located more than half a mile from a transit station. So, stated differently, you can require that an ADU have one additional parking space if the ADU is greater than half a mile away from transit. If, however, the ADU is located less than half a mile from transit, you cannot require any additional parking for that ADU than you would otherwise require for the principal You cannot, we, cities and towns cannot make an ADU subject to a use and occupancy restriction, which is a restriction to, that goes to income.
Can I ask a question on that? So, we have a regulation in town that prohibits overnight parking. So, if you've got a single-residence B lot, that just has a short driveway and no garage, and they put up an ADU, and they're a half mi, and they're within a half mile of the train station, but the tenant, the tenant has a car, where's he supposed to park?
Well, interesting there, the town could, could certainly apply its overnight parking base. There, that's not a zoning regulation, that's, and that's not affected by this change in the law. But I don't know that we have any parking requirement for single-family dwellings in our zoning. Please correct me if I'm wrong about that. So, so there would be no, if a zoning bylaw, I believe, could be drafted, that says there needs to be a minimum of two parking spaces for...
Every lot in town.
A lot with, every lot in town, that would work. You could, I believe, draft a zoning bylaw that says, you know, you need a minimum of one parking space for the principal and one parking space for the accessory, for all lots located outside of a half-mile radius of transit station. That would be perfectly appropriate, but to the, but under current zoning, that lot with the short driveway, they could put in an ADU, I think, by right.
Yeah.
Without being required to provide any additional parking.
They're just going to get a lot of parking tickets.
But yes, to your point, the, nothing about this change in law, this change in law affects only the zoning bylaw, it doesn't affect town's traffic and parking regulations. Okay, so, town cannot make an ADU subject to a use and occupancy restriction, which might be that the ADU be rented at affordable rates, or rented to someone who's over 55, can't require those things. And finally...
Actually, sorry. There'll be some discussion about modifying our use table to allow for more conventional uses of the house for business purposes. Can you restrict the use of an ADU to residential purposes only?
For example, could an ADU have a home occupation? Is that, is that your question?
Yeah.
Could there be a business that ends up happening with an ADU?
If I knit a sweater for Natasha, and she loves it, and she says to, and she says to Artie, you know, Adam makes these great sweaters and scarves, and then Justin and Oscar and Josh Levy, you know, love these, could I now produce 40 scarves a day and sell them out of my house?
We already have that in our bylaw.
You can do that in a single-family dwelling, I don't see why you couldn't do it in an ADU. And there is nothing in the, in the law that I'm aware of that would prohibit, that would distinguish the ADU from, distinguish what you can do in an ADU from what you can do in a principal dwelling, except to the extent that the 900-square-foot maximum area of the ADU could be effectively prohibitory of all sorts of things, other than just a residential use.
The idea that our current bylaw is, and you can start... I tinkered with it, so I may be wrong, but I believe that, that we've limited it to family members, health aides, and rentals.
That's absolutely correct, but if I, my suggestion would be that we...
So, we need to amend that.
Let me exhaust the list of things you cannot do.
Okay.
And then why don't we go through the current bylaw and identify what needs to be changed?
Right, so it sounds like we can't do that.
The bylaw is, needs some work. The town cannot, in its zoning, have a limit on the number of ADUs that can be constructed in any particular zoning district. So, you can't, you know, you can't say, in, you know, single-residence A, you can only have 100 ADUs, first come, first served, can't do that. Okay, now in the category of presumptively unreasonable regulations, and I don't know that the regulations distinction between prohibited regs and unreasonable regs really matters terribly much, they're both things you can't do. That's just how they're divided in the regulations. Unreasonable regulations include dimensional standards that are more restrictive than what is applied to a single-family house. So, I take that to mean that if the rear setback for a principal dwelling is 20 feet, you can't make the...
ADU or 25.
25 or 30 feet. You can't push the ADUs further away than you would otherwise push the principal dwelling. Town, town cannot apply design standards that would not be applied to single-family dwellings in the zone, or would effectively render infeasible the construction of the ADU. So, you, I think the point that the regulations are making there is that the accessory dwelling and the principal dwelling need to be treated effectively the same, in terms of design.
Does that mean you could have an ADU that's 900 square feet? But, and it could also be two and a half stories?
It would be subject to your baseline maximum height regulation, but if the baseline maximum height regulation for a principal dwelling is two and a half stories, yeah, you would, I think...
But you have 900 square feet, so that...
Narrow toll.
Yeah, I get it.
Narrow toll, yeah.
I mean, we, when we were going through our zoning effort, I remember Oscar drew plans of different types of options, and how, the different composition of that, and one of which was, I think, you know, converting space and allowing for a second story, if it was a small ADU, so you could get 900 square feet, but not a 400, you know, 500 square foot plate.
Yep. Saying it couldn't be two and a half stories would, I think, be a dimensional standard that is more restrictive than what is applied to a principal dwelling. Don't do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Also unreasonable, local requirements regarding utilities, only state standards are going to apply to the utilities that serve the ADU, more stringent environmental standards than what you would apply to a single-family dwelling, impact analyses and trap, and studies that are not applied to single-family dwellings cannot be required, and this is the big one, I think, any site plan review requirement that is more stringent than what is applied to single-family dwellings. You cannot apply site plan review... You cannot apply site plan review requirements that are not, that are more stringent than what is applied to a single-family dwelling. Any local prohibition or regulation of modular dwelling units that is more restrictive from state building code. We can, interestingly, prohibit short-term, well, regulate short-term rentals in ADUs. These are intended for long-term occupancy, not Airbnb-type uses. But any regulation of short-term rentals of an ADU needs to be consistent with Chapter 64G, which is the separate section of the general laws that addresses short-term rentals.
Excuse me, I took a look at that. I have no idea what they're talking about. Section 64G is a taxing statute. All it does is tax the rentals. And it has a definition, and it's good. From what I could see, correct me if you found something there, I found nothing there that has any restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rentals in 64G.
I think I had the same experience at my desk this morning as I was preparing for this meeting.
So I have no idea what they're talking about.
The regulations refer you over to 64G and I, and it'll, I think, my takeaway from that is, I don't, it, it didn't seem to make much sense to me how the two lined up. But whatever regulation we want to do in the zoning bylaw of short-term rentals of ADUs, we will just need to square it, make sure we're comfortable that it's not doing anything that 64G does not allow for. And then there's some catchalls. You can't do any regulation that does not serve a legitimate municipal interest. We can't do any regulation that serves a legitimate interest but does not, in its application, rationally relate to that interest. And then we can't do anything that serves a legitimate interest, does not rationally, does rationally relate to the municipal interest, but nullifies the protection for ADUs, imposes excessive costs without advancing a municipal interest, or substantially interferes with the development of the ADU. So that's the catch-all language that they threw in at the end. So those are the things that we can't do in our zoning bylaw. And our current zoning bylaw does several of those things. So I think notably, current zoning requires that any ADUs be attached to the principal dwelling, which we cannot do under the new law. There is a requirement in our current zoning that an owner reside in one of the units, which we can no longer require. There is a requirement in the current zoning that the ADU be occupied by caregivers or family, certain types of family members. We can't, can no longer do that. And there is a requirement in the ADU section that both units have parking, which is fine for any ADU that is located greater than a half mile away from transit, but for any that are located within a half-mile radius, we cannot require that the ADU have parking attached to it.
So we got some dimensional requirements also that are different than the houses?
I think the
Height requirement for auxiliary structure, which this, this would currently reside under a kind of auxiliary structure for a 15-foot height.
I haven't looked at how current zoning regulates accessory structures.
Lee, we, Lee, we have 15, we have a 15-foot maximum on any auxiliary structures, correct? 15-foot height maximum?
I think when it's, when it goes above the 15-foot height, that's when it has to have the setback of the primary structure.
Which we have to have now, I mean, but
So I guess, so to, to your point, and I think, what I'm gonna suggest is that as soon as the final regulations are issued, we will then know exactly what, you know, what, what the, what the set of rules are. Because everything I've told you tonight is a draft. And I think we can surmise that the final regs are gonna be close to the draft regs, but we don't know what, we don't know until they're issued.
Was it this February? Didn't you say it was February that we need to comply?
The, as of February 2nd, the, the final regs will presumably be out, and the statutory law will become effective, even if the regulations are not out yet, which is to say that ADUs will need to be allowed by right, and cannot be subjected to unreasonable regulations.
Sorry, I just wanna, so what are the next steps? I mean, and just in general, are you, are you basically gonna be drafting something? Because if we have an ADU, come to our next meeting.
I was gonna say, how long is, is there, is there a period that towns can say, are we gonna modify something by draft? Meaning if the final regulations come out, how long do municipalities have to correct their zoning? Or is it supposed to be immediate? And if they do, then we need to have some guidance, interim guidance until we get our zoning regulations approved by town meeting and all that stuff?
My belief is that there will be a window of time in just about every town in Massachusetts where this law will be effective and towns do not have compliant zoning on their books. Because frankly, there simply wasn't enough time to do it. And what that, what that means in practice is that if in that window of time, somebody wants to build an accessory dwelling unit, there will need to be an analysis performed about what regulations in the existing zoning can be applied to that proposed accessory dwelling unit, and that analysis will be performed by the building department in its review of, a building permit application.
It wouldn't even necessarily come to us, would it?
It would not come to you.
Chris?
And I guess the, the second point is, it is in, under the draft regs, so backing up, it is clear enough to me that we need to revise, substantially revise the zoning that Needham has on the books relative to ADUs. It is an interesting question, however, what we can accomplish in that zoning under these regulations. If the final regulations are close to these regulations, you know, one of the things I said we could not do is require something through site plan review of an ADU that we do not require of a principal dwelling. If that stays in as-is, and we can't require analyses or utilities greater than what the state would otherwise require, or environmental review that we don't require for single-family dwellings, there's not, I'm not sure exactly what there is to regulate. Dimensional standards would be perhaps
Stretch energy code and all that stuff.
What about the address? I just, let me just bring up the address just like, the house is on 56 Warren Street, okay? What about if it gets, so an ADU is built up back rental to different people, is it going to be, is it gonna be allowed to then have a second address? I know that sounds a little fundamentally obvious, but maybe it's not. What will be allowed, or what has to be allowed as far as address is?
I think that's up to the post office.
That's, I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that question. But it is a freestanding, it is accessory to the principal dwelling in, in its size and scale, but it is a freestanding independent dwelling that, you know, has all the facilities. 51A, 51B? I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to the question.
You know how much I hate to disagree with you.
You love disagreeing.
Yeah, I love disagreement. But there's nothing in the proposed regs about a time period to amend, but there is a section that basically says, as soon as these regs are in effect, everything that's in your zoning that doesn't comply automatically is thrown out. We don't have to amend anything because Joe, as the building inspector, has to allow an ADU application that conforms to the proposed regs even though they don't, even though they don't conform to our zoning. That's how I read subsection four.
Oh, I, I absolutely agree with everything you just said. I completely agree. My only
So we can take our time.
I suppose, no, I suppose that's right.
But why would we, I guess?
So
Simply because we don't like to present more than 10 zoning regulations at any town meeting.
But, 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 just, but I, but I absolutely agree with everything you just said. My, my comment was, we need, you know, we likely want to redo, revise the zoning to be consistent with the state regulations. And if there's any ability to regulate above and beyond what's in the regs, maybe we'd want to talk about that too. But it is true that the final regulations should provide a perfectly clear roadmap as to what can get built and what can't get built. But, but to your point, I'm not gonna suggest that you, we rush this any faster than, than the board thinks appropriate.
That will be propagated soon. Why don't we just repeal our zoning bylaw? Because we already, there's already state regulation on this. I don't know that we need, or we're not regulating anything beyond the requirement of, of the state. So why don't we just repeal what we have? Because all of the other state requirements then prevail, and there's no conflict with our zoning bylaw. So instead of drafting something new, I just don't see in this circumstance why we don't just repeal what we have.
I would, before offering an opinion on that suggestion, I would want to go through it and see if there is anything that is in the existing zoning that is consistent with the draft regulations, and that would offer some value to the town as a regulation. For example, there shall be no more than one ADU on a lot, which, that
Well, we can allow it with special agreement.
Add Adam's suggestion into consideration and calls.
You know, we've got, we've got a lot of things in our bylaw that just conform to state law. For example, you know, everything, everything that's already in Chapter 48, Section 3, that says we have to allow it as of right, we have it in our bylaw that says you have to allow that as of right. And there's nothing wrong with, with, you know, having something that's easier for Joe, or whoever our building inspector is, to look at because he's looking at our bylaws that, you know, is there and conforms with state law.
And to, the other thing that just occurred to me in response to your question, Adam, is that repealing a section of the zoning bylaw, even if you're doing it to be consistent with state law, is procedurally no easier than amending the zoning bylaw. In other words, you would need to have a hearing, you would need to
But that's a perform, that's effectively performative.
Yeah. My only thought is that it might make sense to repeal and replace at the same time, as opposed to repeal and replace six months or a year later.
I think it's helpful to have the rules kind of laid out in the zoning, so people understand what the rules are. Without having to go back to state law to figure out what how, what the rules are.
It is easier and more helpful for people to refer to the local zoning bylaw than it is to try to track down the state regs.
So I need to accomplish that by a couple of footnotes. We're dealing with our residential district and uses and so on. What we could set up is, you know, is again on the revisal we have, most of what we have, and come in and just say it shall conform to these state requirements as may be further amended by the state, so that we were always in compliance. And the only thing that we're really regulating at that point is that there's not more than one on a, on a lot.
Why don't we have, Chris, yeah, why don't we, why don't we have you review it?
Wait, 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 wait. We have a requirement, which already conforms, that says the ADU has to be 900 square feet. You know, maximum 900 square feet. If we have a, but, this bylaw doesn't, doesn't limit ADUs to 900 square feet. It says we cannot limit it to anything less than 900 square feet. So somebody, if we don't have an ADU bylaw, somebody can come in with an ADU that's 1,200 square feet.
No, 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 no.
No?
Less than half the grocery area 900 square feet, whenever smaller, right?
So it is, yes, 900 square feet is, they can be 900 square feet under state law.
Right.
They can be no greater than 900 square feet. They can be smaller than that, if the size of the house
Is smaller.
Is smaller.
If it's, so it's less than
We can regulate it to be smaller if the house is smaller.
Half the grocery area of the house are 900 square feet.
Okay, it's a definitional idea, okay.
So I, I mean, I recommend that you take all this information and, you know, give us a recommendation, and when can you do that by?
So I can do that in fairly short order. Yeah, I think it, once we see the final regulations. So I guess my, my way of thinking about it would be that the final regulations are gonna be released within the next two weeks, presumably. Once those become final, I can then start thinking in earnest, and with, in, along with Lee and Alex and anybody else who wants to weigh in, on how, what we can, how to draft zoning that is consistent with the final regulations.
So Lee, what's our timing if we want to do it in May?
We probably have to do it within this special, what a mansion.
So we could do it in May. It's probably a lot
It's, it's tight, but I think maybe
Yeah, it's probably a lot easier on everybody if you wait until October. In terms of
Let's see how many changes it is, right?
Can I imagine?
I think the question would be, in terms of, in terms of timing, this is, this can be the first question that I attempt to answer when the final regulations come out, is what regulation could we do for, of ADUs that, that, that we think is important? Because again, as of February 2nd, if somebody wants to build an ADU, there's nothing, there's nothing holding them back. So they, they don't need to wait for the zoning to be adopted to build an ADU. The real question is, is there any regulation that is important to get on the books quickly to respond to that ability of people to start constructing?
If you go on what, you have, we have a pretty clear idea on what these regulations are. We know, we know what our existing bylaw is. We can start the 90% of the red line and, and
Then wait till the law comes out and
And then we do our hearing then. You're only gonna, you're only gonna make 10%, 15% at most of a change where the regulation comes out and finalized.
Quick, quick question, just to clarify. So all the regulations that are on SRB, SRB, SRA and so forth, if they're in there now, they will confirm, they will go over to if someone wants to build an ADU, which also has to do with lock coverage then. Lock, just state the obvious, lock coverage. So this has to abide by the lock coverage on the, on the current bylaw?
Yes.
Yeah, and the FAR.
Yeah, and the FAR, the lock coverage.
So there are some controls in some ways, we just have to identify what they are so that we understand if we need to review something.
But we don't have the parking, I think that, the parking piece is, we have it here in this, but
We don't currently
We have it in the ADU bylaw, but that's the only place it sits.
But we don't currently have a parking requirement for principal, single-family dwellings. So it is difficult for me to think about how we would require an additional parking space for the ADU when there is no required number of parking spaces for, there's nothing to add to.
Maybe I, maybe I have to introduce it then for the single-family, which is a minimum of one, and then add it in for the ADU. I mean, if you're, if you're really concerned about
Which could be a much more complicated exercise than, than, that could be, that could be incredibly complicated. I, I don't know.
To the point that I made before, we really have an effective parking regulation in our off-street parking prohibition. So, you know, you, you've got a single-family residence, you've got an ADU, and they have to understand that they're gonna have to provide parking because they can't park on the street. So however many cars they have, they have to, they have to get them off the street. So, you know, and that's not gonna be in the ADU regs, so we're not gonna be viol, violative of the statute or the regulations. We're not gonna require it there, we're just gonna say, say to them, you know, if you can't, if you can't put your car in, you know, on the lot, then you're gonna get a ticket.
So I think you have to work on it to get us for, you know, in time for the May special.
It is, yes. It is, yes, I do. I guess my only question is, it, it's easy enough to subtract from the existing zoning bylaw, subtract out the things that do not conform with the new law. It is easy enough, once the final regulations come out, to draft zoning that basically just refers over to those regulations to say what we can, can't do. If there's anything additional we want to do to respond to the new, brand-new possibility of detached accessory dwelling units being able to go on all lots, that's, I guess, the question.
We can't regulate it more than what, than it's permissible by, by the principal residents. So we just state that in the regulation, that's fine.
I forget what we have, but we want to make sure that with the detached ADU I forget what we have, but we want to make sure that with the detached ADUs, that they conform to the setback requirements.
Of the principal.
Of the principal residence. And we don't have, we don't have that language now because we don't have detached ADUs. So we want to put something in there that says with a detached ADU, they have to conform to these setbacks.
That's sort of exactly the same, what I'm, the kind of additional drafting that I'm thinking about, which is that you would want a sentence at a minimum in the zoning, I think, that says accessory dwelling units are subject to the same dimensional requirements across the entire dimensional table that principal dwellings are, or something to that effect.
Otherwise, you're going to have people saying that they can be five feet away because it's an accessory building.
Yeah, but we...
But maybe you want them in some accessory building. I mean, we talked about that.
But the state law says it can't be any more restrictive.
No, this is less restrictive. I mean, I think we, I thought when we did the...
That's less restrictive.
I think it's less restrictive, but I thought we looked at that in the language when we did the detached the last times, and I thought, I thought we made it less restrictive.
But here, but I guess the, the conflict then can be resolved this way. We have some homes that are, and what we were talking about this, that are non-conforming as to setbacks. So if that's the case, if you have a home in a district that has a 12-foot setback or a 14-foot setback, and, and the garage attached or detached is five feet instead of 14 feet.
It's allowed to be that if it's under 15 feet in height.
Under our current, under our current...
But any new, yeah, but any new would have to abide by that. You put a floor above it, and it has to be the setback of the principal structure. And I thought we made some modifications to that. I don't remember the details.
So those were the, were the modifications. But to my point, if you have an attached garage...
If you have, if you have non-conforming, do you have to contain, keep the non-conforming? Or do you have to go by what the...
If it's new construction, I guess it has to conform to the new...
Or is it a special permit to alter pre-existing non-conforming structure? I don't know.
You need to go write these things. We're going to start coming up with like every possible...
Because if I have a garage, that's five feet away from the property.
That's really the only substantive thing.
I want to get back to, I want to get back to the timing issue because we already have, we're going to have in May, the base plan in front of town meeting. And I think this board has to look at what other zoning changes are we prioritizing? And do we want to prioritize this? We may have to prioritize this ahead of other things that we may want to bring in front of the May town meeting. If you've got, if we've got nothing else to present at the May town meeting at this time, I've got no problem doing, you know, then we've got only two zoning articles in front of town meeting. The base plan and this, that's fine.
Lee, do you think there's anything else regarding zoning that we would be doing by?
No, I thought, I thought it was going to be the ADUs actually, with, with the base plan and the...
So do you feel comfortable, Paul, with the ADUs?
Yeah, I'm comfortable having two.
Especially if this just happened, let's just get it right. So because once they start coming in, we want to make sure that we know how to move forward.
So we can head towards that timing unless something comes up where it alters the need to change the timing.
But we'll still have all the information.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Half of those aren't going to be thrown out in two weeks.
I, I do not, I would not ordinarily recommend that, the timing is tight and that's the state's timeline, that, that everybody finds herself in the same, in this position because of the way the regulations are being released. But I would not ordinarily want to be drafting a important zoning bylaw before the final regulations are out. Something, something, I don't know what's going to change.
But at least if you have a draft, and then they come out, and then let's vet it then. But at least we have a, you have a leg up to see what it is.
Absolutely.
Then if a town challenges it, it's all up in the air anyway.
Already.
I'm just saying. It's not that it's never happened before.
We need to be positive.
I get me positive. I'm not going to get into how Chris is paid, but on the assumption that he's paid on an hourly basis, I don't think our town manager wants to pay Chris to draft regulations which he then has to turn around and redraft.
Yes. Yeah, I think we should wait till the finals and then just do it. And the timing is what the timing is. It's like a week and a half.
The regs, the final regs will come out. I'll review them and I can be back at the year, you know, if not next meeting, the week, the meeting after that, if you guys have time for them.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
That's good.
Not that I have a problem with your billing.
You're helping a fellow lawyer.
Well, yeah, it wouldn't be annual, but for the special, it can be last year.
It's usually, yeah, it's usually a month after the end.
Okay, kind of, right, so.
Okay, so the next one is the Board of Appeals. There are four items here. Oh, sorry, sorry, I missed. Yes. The General Bylaw Review Committee appointment.
Large House.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Large House. And so this is regarding, and maybe, Lee, do you want to explain it? But Bill Paulson having, he filled out an application regarding any, disclosing anything regarding having a conflict of interest. And it seems that...
He does, because, I mean, I read, I read the material. He earns a living by selling homes that may be new construction or may be sold to a builder. And therefore, by earning a commission, has a financial interest in any potential residential lot for sale in the town. And so he's affirmatively disclosing that because he's going to be participating in shaping the zoning bylaw.
Right, and you're, and we're basically making a finding that, that it's not substantial to likely affect the integrity of the services he would provide on the committee.
In the conversations he's been having, it's clear that, that he's very, he's pretty clearly unbiased, as unbiased as anyone can be in this conversation.
This is, didn't, didn't we say we didn't want Adam on the committee because of, because of the same reason?
Yeah.
I mean, to be, to be fair, we...
The difference is coming from the planning board. That was the difference from the planning board. I mean, all, all real estate agents are selling new construction homes.
I know that we've required, so I was still talking. I, I know that in this, in the charter, or that there are, we did require a real estate developer. So we, you know, that, we, we did say that that was going to be a certain level of risk. We said we wanted to have a real estate agent. So we can't just then prohibit all real estate agents. But he does, he does work in Needham. And it's just, it's just a little familiar. That's all I'm saying, is why we objected to, you know, someone else for something that, you know, I just find hypocritical, so.
Okay, so what is your recommendation?
I, well, I mean, I, I...
On a second idea, I just want to say, let's just go person by person. Like, what is your recommendation that there is a conflict of interest and it's not in the best interest of that committee?
Well, I don't even know if it's materially a conflict, other than, same reason I didn't think it was a material conflict for Adam. But, I mean, as long as he's, just, he's saying I'm a good guy, I'm not going to be conflicted. I, I don't know, it all depends. It depends on the recommendation that's outputted out of this committee. You know what I mean? If, if, but Natasha, Chris wants to...
I can provide context, maybe additional explanation if it's in all that fall.
Okay. So Chapter 268A, Section 19 prohibits any municipal employee from acting on a matter in which they have a financial interest. That's the general rule. There is an exception to that rule in the Ethics Committee Commission's regulations that says if there is a border committee that is required by law to have a designated member of a particular profession sitting on that border committee, then that, effectively, that member can't be faulted for having a financial interest because he's representing the profession as a whole in his, in his, in his work on the committee. So this particular employee was assigned to the Realtor seat. So there was a, in, in initial discussion with me, a conclusion was made that, that the exemption covered his work on the committee. Because you needed a Realtor, he was going to be the Realtor. That wouldn't have cured, that exemption would not have cured the financial interest of anybody else who was assigned to the committee. Only that one person, the Realtor, for that seat. In his preparation for coming online as a member of this ethical committee, he was interested in hearing about that exemption and expressed the, the additional comment that much of his work is, or at least some percentage of his work, is, involves new construction in Needham in particular. And he expressed some, well, yeah, at least asked the question whether that was enough to take him out of the exemption in the State Ethics Commission's regulations. Because he was interested in that, having that question answered, we called the Ethics Commission, and the feedback that they gave back was, it's likely that the exemption does apply, but out of an abundance of caution, why don't you have the appointing authority? In addition to the exemption, make a finding under 268A, Section 19B that the appointing authority believes that any financial interest that may exist here is not so substantial as to interfere with his work, what the work that he is going to be doing for the town. So that was, the advice, that advice was sort of framed as being conservative, but the exemption under 19B does exist, and there's, in the commission's eyes, no harm in invoking it. So there was sort of a, the, the fact that this is here before you as the appointing authority tonight is kind of a belt and suspenders approach to a, you know, the, the way the Ethics Commission, the feedback that was received from the Ethics Commission, which was, again, the exemption exists, well, the exemption exists and the 19B exemption also exists. Use both. That'll make the, if you make the finding, that'll make the, any appearance of a financial interest go away.
I remember during our interviews with Bill, he talked about some of, he talked about the different work he did, working selling and working, and having knowledge of some of the, the new home construction, the builders. So he wasn't hiding the type of work he did, certainly. And, and he's, he's a very unbiased person as being able to step back and look at things. And he's come across, over the, I've known for years, as far as how he's looked at building construction, some of the concerns and all. And although he's not officially on the committee, he's, he stepped back a little bit. He's still given, he's still given input, and it's clear that he has a lot of value as far as what we could use on the committee. And he's, and again, he's, I, I see no, nothing in him that gives a bias other than the fact he's a real estate agent.
And like I said, and I acknowledge that, that that was the role that he was there to fill. So I, I understand that, I was there at the interviews as well. I'm just looking at the perceived conflict of interest, which I don't believe that there is a conflict of interest, but there's a perceived conflict of interest. And as long as general counsel has opined and consulted with the Ethics Commission, then, you know, I just, we need to, I think we throw around conflict interests a little, like, everywhere, when in reality, it's, it's really kind of a, it's more prescribed and narrow, you know. But nonetheless, that's, that's my opinion.
Any other questions? Thank you. So do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I would make, I would make a motion that we appoint... That's the motion, that's the motion, sorry, that's the motion. Move that the planning board wrote as appointing official to the Large House Review Study Committee that is reviewed, MGL, Chapter 268A, Section 19, disclosure of appointing Bill Paulson as determining that the financial interest identified area is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee.
Is there a second?
So Chris, just before we, before we vote, Chris? I, as a, as a legal matter, it's fine for me to vote on this, correct? As a legal matter, it's fine for me to vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay, so motion by already, second by Paul, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, see the motion stand. Okay, thank you. So the next item is the Board of Appeals. So there are four, um, 51 Fremont Street, 378 Manning Street, 282 Warren Street, and Zero Colgate Road, sorry. Lee, do you have any, do you have any thoughts on any of these? And before we see if anyone else on the board does?
I didn't have any issues with any of them. Actually, the first one that you mentioned, we've already commented, we've already commented on. So 51 Fremont was basically a reuse of an existing building to allow a, I think, an equipment rental facility at 51 Fremont Street. 378 Manning Street is an appeal of a decision that the building inspector issued regarding a two-family housing construction where it was done as of right under the pretext that the house footprint was going to remain under the size of the existing structure, and they're claiming that it exceeds that threshold. I don't know if the board will want to comment on that. The next one, on 282 Warren Street, is a variance. It's a situation where there's an existing lot that is presently non-conforming relative to a build factor. Or basically, is, the build factor doesn't apply to that lot because it was created prior to 1985. But with this change, the build factor is, is triggered. And so now when that happens, they're going to need a variance in order to basically convey a slip or two in a budding property. And then the last case is just really a, an appeal, a decision that the building inspector made relative to whether, a determination as to whether a lot has to require frontage on a way, given the history of that private way.
Any questions on any of these?
I'm going to say that we should have no comment on any of these. I was fascinated by 282 Warren Street, simply from the point of view that it's my understanding that historically, our zoning board of appeals does not like to grant variances. They are very strict on granting variances. There are municipalities that aren't as strict. One of the requirements of granting a variance is that there has to be a hardship. And I read the application more than once. I fail to see a hardship here. If I were on the ZBA and I didn't like granting variances, because that's what our ZBA does, I would vote to say that there's no hardship here. But it's not in front of us, it's in front of the ZBA.
Well, it's in front of us for comments, but it's in front of us for comments.
But, you know, I don't feel that the ZBA should be as strict about variances as they are. So, you know, it's, you know, if the ZBA were less strict about variances, then I would let it go and say, you know, there's no harm to, there's no harm to the neighbors. There's certainly no harm to the neighbors, there's no harm to the neighborhood. So I would grant the variance, but if I were on the board that says we don't like granting variances unless there, there is a real, real, real hardship, I don't see a real, real, real hardship here.
Yeah, because the access is done now for easements. They want to get rid of easements.
They've got their cross easements.
They have their cross easements. And they want to get rid of the cross easements and do a convenience, so it's...
Yeah, which is, you know, effectively the same thing.
They comment based on, on, on the actual board itself rather than the actual...
That's right.
So, yeah, I will second your, if you wanted to make a move, it's not a comment.
So, you know, no comment on any of these from the planning board.
So Paul, no comments, second for Justin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just like to talk.
You could have fooled me, Paul, you could have fooled me. I don't buy it, I don't buy it.
I think that comment's going to be in the observer.
We appreciate that, Paul.
I'm going to make sure it's in the minutes, Paul.
So we're already on Facebook.
Okay, so that's the Board of Appeals meeting minutes. Do we have November 19th meeting minutes?
I move passage of those minutes.
Well, that's due November 19th. So Adam moves to...
Pass the November 19 minutes.
Okay.
Second to the November 19.
So motion by Adam, second by Justin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then there's the November 25th?
I move passage of the November 25th minutes.
Second.
So Adam, again, motion and, and Justin, second it. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the December 3rd, 2024 meeting minutes?
I move acceptance of the December...
3rd.
December 3rd minutes.
Second.
Okay, so Adam, that's the motion, and Justin's second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And is that the... And, um, is that the last one? No, December 17th, wow, we're caught up, almost.
I move, uh, acceptance of the November, December 17 minutes.
Second.
Okay, so, Adam makes the motion, Justin seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so beyond that, we have a report for Plan Director and Board Members.
Uh, do you want to follow, we went, I guess we maybe we start with the Finance Committee. Sure, Natasha and Artie and I went to the Finance Committee last week to present the departmental budget. I think they, we have two add-ons in our, you know, we have our normal operating budget, which is basically, I would say, a level funded budget. But we did ask for a planning position and we asked for additional administrative support. Um, and we, I think most of the conversation was really around the planner, what would the planner do? Why do we need the planner? And so, we're preparing some information, additional information for them to outline some of the projects that we would be involved with.
To be fair, I think we need to give more information because I think every department needs someone. So, why is this more valuable than others, so?
And that's fine, advocating for a department is, you know.
And so, I think we need to say, this is, these are the projects, this is the amount of time, this is the amount of time that we're spending on it, these are the things that we can't get to, and making it clear so that there can be a decision as to where the funds are allocated in the town for the people that need it the most.
Isn't that what went up?
Is that?
That's kind of what we talked about.
Right, but.
Well, the difference, well, the difference, the different thing is that really go into the, go into the possibilities of what projects may be.
It's more de, it's more detailed information.
What's the difference between the comprehensive discussion of projects that you and I worked on last year?
No, no, we're gonna, we're gonna use that.
We're gonna use that, and actually, that was in the narrative that was given.
Right, but my point is that failed too.
Well, I think the town man, well, the town manager has told me that she understands the need for a planner and she supports the need for an additional planner.
But we need to give the additional information.
I think it's an issue of whether or not they had the funds this year to fund the position. I mean.
But we need to give the information, more detailed information specifically.
For each project, for each project possibility.
We did that in the past.
I know, we just, we just have to for, frame it with the correct information so that we should have the right decision. What, do you have to?
I'm working, well, I'm doing the action plan this week and this, and then zoning for the state and then next week I will work on the other days.
And then, um, uh, when are you on the agenda, when are we on the agenda next?
We're not on the agenda yet, they just expect us to submit this in writing.
And then they'll take a vote on it.
They'll take a vote on it, and the town manager will make her recommendation.
Um, the large house, do you want?
Oh, we have, um, one of three action items. So, we had a Large House Review Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, we walked away with three action items. Uh, one was looking at comparable towns to Needham, looking at the FAR.
Yes, we're doing that research of the staff.
Research that, we're looking at the teardowns.
Well, we're, we're gonna, so far, we're just putting together a list, we're looking at Newton, we're looking at Wellesley, we're looking at Lexington, we're gonna look at Winchester, we're gonna look at Sudbury, I can't remember what was else. If they have, if they have those kinds of regulations, we're, we're trying to identify towns that are comparable to Needham. And so, we're gonna put together what, how they, how are they defining the term, first of all? What are the FARs that they're applying on what lot sizes with what dimensional standards? And do they have any, um, review process that's ancillary to this, the as of right process? So, we're gonna, we're pulling together that information for the committee, just so they have a historical context of what other towns are doing.
And, and so, again, this, there's the three items, so there's that item that we, that Lee's talking about, is also looking at teardowns the past three years. And then we're looking at the, the non-conforming, we're starting, we're gonna start with the non-conforming lots of, I mean, at this case, we have to pull all the lots and then separate out the non-conforming lots to see what houses have been built on those lots and see, see how they, see how they're fitting and see what maybe changes we may want to do. Then, then we're gonna pull the other lots, I think we're primarily talking about SRB, I believe.
Yes, only SRB.
SRB, then we're gonna pull the other lots, the conforming lots, to see, then from there, we're gonna try to determine what changes, how, how does it fit, how's the FAR working? How's it, the teardowns and how is it working in those lots, conforming, non-conforming, at this point? Well, now, that's part of it, that's part of it as well.
Well, we're looking at coverage too. So, essentially, basically, we have a list of all the non-conforming permits that were issued for the last three years. There's a small working group, which involves architect, a builder. And we're basically, we've identified from that list, the houses we think are representative to look at. And we're modeling those, we pulled all the building plans for those, for those drawings and we have a table, basically, that we created, an Excel spreadsheet, that lets us test the parameters.
Sure.
Um, and I think the idea, the goal is to maybe find what we feel is the right fit on a lot is a good example, in a, in a sense, reverse engineer that. And then, you know, look at how changes in the definition itself would apply to those circumstances when they're actually modeled through this Excel spreadsheet.
So, when you, when you are distributing that to the, um, to the committee members, can you also forward me at the same time?
The package, sure.
And in particular, I'd like to see the, you know, the results of the research of the additional.
I think it's important that the planning board pay as much attention along the line as possible and get as much feedback along the line as possible. So, when we get here, we're as up to date as we could possibly be and.
So, with that, so you're doing research right now, you're gonna, when are you compiling that research?
That's going to the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting is February 3rd.
So, February 3rd.
We're getting together again on Thursday to kind of look at the results.
So, Mo is a co-chair, co-chair with me, Mo, you know, myself and Lee, we're meeting on Thursday. I said, no, we're meeting Friday, we're meeting Friday.
February 3rd, you'll have a meeting.
We're meeting Friday.
Next Friday.
Oh, week on Friday, sorry.
Week on Friday, I, the working group is meeting on Thursday this week.
And one thing that we have, which is really nice, Ed Quinlan put together a really nice Excel sheet that we can, you basically plug in what are the parameters to the house, square footage, and then what lot it is, and it'll actually come out and flag whether it's conforming or non-conforming. It takes all the parameters from the, from the regulations from our bylaws. And that's how the.
Plugs it in.
That's how it was programmed, you plug in for a different lot, the size of the house and how many square feet, and it'll plug in, it'll come back and right away, does it conform or not conform? It basically flags it, flags with a fail, no fail. No pass, no pass.
So, what's the big picture, February 3rd you meet again and you look at all of that and then?
We're gonna look at the, we're gonna present the information on what other towns are doing and how they're defining it and what the parameters are they have, and then we're gonna present the, we're talking about this on Thursday, we're gonna present the information on the non-conforming lots.
Right, but then, what's the big timeline for this whole study? So, if you're meeting February 3rd, what's after February 3rd?
Well, after February, we're, we're meeting monthly. And so, I think after February 3rd, we'll probably take a look at, maybe, well, depends on how, what comes out of that meeting.
Right, right, right.
And we'll move into probably conforming lots next.
Okay. So, you're just gonna meet monthly, so you're gonna meet through?
So, I think the zoning won't have, I mean, there'll be a report to town meeting in May, but the zoning will happen in the fall.
Yeah, we're looking at, we're looking at October. So, we're going for the study now, at some point, we'll, well, at some point, we'll know where we may be projecting, where we may want to, at some point, we'll know we want to have a hearing, and we don't know yet.
No, I think we need to have a proposal.
We, yeah, we, yeah, we have.
Before we have a hearing.
Yeah.
No, well, I mean, a hearing, well, we have to have some idea what's going on, but we have to have a hearing. I would like to have some type of hearing before we hit the summer.
Well, we probably will be, I'll have some kind of public meetings.
Yeah, we want to have some, have a public meeting before we hit the summer.
Right.
That's gonna be, I think that'll be important.
So, February 3rd, everybody should join in and listen in or watch the video.
Will you send out the link to that, please?
Sure. Yeah, because the packet will be on the link.
And, and what about the town manager, is that going on right now too?
Just got started tonight. There was a, um, the town, the town has hired a professional who clearly, from his presentation tonight, clearly specializes in finding town managers. And I understand a lot of other, um, he, one of the, um, one of the members of the, of this search committee was on the search committee for the director of the library and worked with him on that. So, he presented before we were part of the meeting, he presented to the select board, um, his proposal, which they adopted, then we were called to the table and he basically went through, uh, the procedure and the timeline, which is that now that he has gotten the select board vote, he's gonna be putting it out there. And he's got his, um, uh, resources, because he does this so often, you know, it's gonna go out nationally, basically. And so, he's putting in a timeline, I think he said February 8th, to get resumes?
Was.
And then, he's anticipating for, for us, probably getting 20, 25 resumes, give or take, which he will winnow down, um, probably have 10 or 15, um, which he will then send, that's when the search committee gets involved. And then, we review the resumes independently, but then he's gonna call a meeting for the search committee to get together and discuss the resumes so that we can winnow that down to probably fewer than 10, uh, to actually interview. And then he will set up the interviews with those that we want to interview. He would like to do it all in one day, if not one day, maybe on consecutive days, which sounds like a good idea. You don't want to space it out because then, you know, people.
Yeah, you forget.
Well, you forget or you have some, something that you, you know, have stuck in your mind. And then, we winnow it down to three, maybe two, maybe four. I don't think, three is his ideal number, um, four if necessary, two if necessary, can't have one by state law, uh, to present to the select board. And then it's out of our hands and it's up to the select board to then interview and decide among the three or four that the search committee has, has winnowed down. I'm finding the whole process kind of exciting. It's, I think he's looking to have us make our recommendation of the finalists to the select board by the middle of March. So, um, so we're looking at his getting the resumes around February 8th, having us meet during school vacation week, probably the end of school vacation week, which will be like around February 20th. And then doing the interviews the end of February, beginning of March, and making recommendations to the select board by the middle of March. And then, um, they'll make the recommendation and Kate can retire or whatever it is that she's doing, moving on or retiring, I don't know what she's doing. She moving on or is she retiring?
I think she, well, she says she's gonna be doing something else, so.
Okay, so she's moving on. So, Kate can move on.
Well, thanks, that's really great.
So, there is one thing, I mean, it's, so I got a phone call the other, a couple of days ago from someone in town that has spoken to Wolfen and sounds like Wolfen has some interest in developing Muzzy. Moving forward, we're starting with Muzzy, but as housing, some combination housing, office, maybe medical office, maybe some restaurants and retail, but also possibly 55 plus. So, um.
I know, I'm talking to tomorrow at 1:00.
Talking, talking tomorrow, won't be.
I'll let you know what I.
So, stay tuned, everyone.
Stay tuned, stay tuned.
Okay.
55 plus will be directly across the street from Wing Gate.
Right, a little.
So, we're gonna segregate all the.
All the lights.
As we sing in Yiddish, Adam, all the, all the cockers.
That's right. It's, uh, yeah, I, um.
It isn't all 55 plus.
Theoretically, it'd be better for traffic if it was. That would be.
Are you kidding, having all those 90-year-old drivers coming out of those two complexes?
I think we're.
On that note.
Paul, I think we're still on live on recording.
Well, if we get, if we get the 20, if we get the $20 million grant, we can say.
That was Paul Albert talking about the 90-plus-year-old drivers.
So, I do have, I do have some updates for the mobility.
So, we have some updates here.
From Mobility and Coordination Committee, um, they, they did have a joint transportation summit in February as per statute, I think they're gonna try to limit it to one now, they've been, their statute is, not statute, their charter is two. But, um, there was some updates regarding the Highland Ave TIP project, which is obviously going through its design stage and fun, looking for funding. Um, that's redoing Highland Ave Signals and perhaps other things, it's all about scope, whether there's gonna be bike lanes, if there's bike lanes and it's, there's, there's other things with trees and all that stuff like that. So, that, that'll be dealt with, but at least they're, they're looking at it from the funding perspective. Mark Tree Road reconstruction has been, there was a neighborhood meeting, um, that was done by DPW to engage with the neighborhood, give a couple of different options with regards to reconstruction. Obviously, that's gonna be significant because the amount of shale and rock, whatever, that's on the side, it's gonna, it's gonna require blasting and other things. But they were, um, they met with the, about whether to have a sidewalk on both sides or one side. And the neighbors opined and kind of put, put their opinion, I think, I, from what I heard, one of, the vice chair of TMAC was there, so I just heard it from her, that they might have coalesced around or liked the idea of one sidewalk. But, um, that also leads into the other sidewalk maintenance. There is some pilots that are gonna be looked at to potentially see areas, cul-de-sacs, areas that the neighbors kind of all coalesce around saying, okay, you can remove one side of sidewalks. There was also talked about, um, whether we need to change our bylaw for subdivisions of whether we, because we require sidewalks on both sides and whether we, because we always give variances on that anyways, or whether we actually need to remove that requirement and would you say, you know, it's gonna be, whatever, so, um, there was kind of talk about that, but they, but they know also on the planning board, historically, just doesn't necessarily, they always give variances on that. And so, yeah, that's going on, there was an update on Envision, and I know, were you there at the last one? Should I just report on the Envision Needham? Because I know you're, you sit from, or Envision Needham, but, um, they are going forward with walkthroughs in February. It's gonna be pushed out to anyone from the public, as well as any members of the committee. They're going to, they've identified 15 points between, uh, Pickering and Linden and kind of they'll take people various days, evenings, weekends, along a walking tour to kind of talk about the look and feel, kind of talk about what are the safety issues, what are the pain points? Are there lighting issues, is there a crosswalk here, you know, is it unsafe? What is your experience? And they're all gonna put that data into, um, the, um, the recommendations that they will then take the next steps to recommend to the committee to say, this is kind of the, their recommendation for, um, for the look and feel of town, so, town center. That was the only, yeah.
That's why we need another planning person. To those that are, um, okay, well, thank you so much, anything else, or?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adam, you wanted to say second.
Oh, did you want?
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.